Yeah, these two are. The four. Yeah. Those aren't the four. This one for you. Thank you to you. I'm kidding. You're so beautiful. I love you.
Thank you. Hi Stephanie. How are you? Good, good.
for June 18th, 2013. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Schuler. Mrs. Clemmison. Mr. Borkowski.
Present.
Mr. Lemke.
Present.
Mr. Fulker.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the President's Report. This month, there is not a President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'd like to ask Dr. Hendrickson to come forward and tell us about some important work that is going on in various parts of the district, both in our parent and in our teacher communities.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. We've just been out of school eight days, and yet we've had probably over 100 people involved already, our staff, involved in redesigning and creating curriculum. We've had an introduction to the K-4 Bridges and Number Corner Math Program that's coming out next year. We've had a mentor program overhaul, so that mentors for next year will be well-versed with the Danielson Effective Teaching rubric. We've had the development of emotional wellness planning for building activities next year, the 5-8 Scope and Sequence created for the health curriculum, the creation of scope and sequences for English Language Arts in each of the grade levels, a development of a 5-8 Math Intervention Program, the creation of the K-3 Science Curriculum in Mandarin, professional development of Mandarin teachers with Barrington and Schaumburg, and development of learning units integrating kindergarten language arts and science, a new IB-like unit for middle school social studies and language arts, and professional development for teachers using Agile Mind next year. Also, the development of K-4 Science Curriculum to align with the next-generation science standards. So, lots and lots of teacher meetings in this building and other places in the district in these last eight days. As well, Anne Dunn has begun the Extended School Year Program for students with special needs at Sheridan, and Bridget Booker is facilitating about seven classes of brainstormers enrichment classes: math, reading, writing, funky furniture, SoCrafty, and a couple others. As well, just today, we began for 40 students the Algebra Academy for 7th and 8th Grade at the high school. So, lots, lots going on already. It's been a good start. Questions?
Could you tell us about the committee work that you have going on as well? The two, you want to mention the LASIK Committee and the other committees as well?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. Well, we're trying to gather parents. We've had a number of teachers volunteer to be a part of our LASIK Committee. Our LASIK is the Language Acquisition School Integration Committee, and the idea here is to find, you know, what's the best way to bring about language acquisition? Is it immersion? And if it is, then what's the best way to integrate it in our elementary schools as we move forward? So, we are looking hard for a lot of parent involvement, representatives from each of the three elementary schools, and so far, we've really only had about four people asked to be part of that. So, I'm pleading, please help us make this very collaborative and make it, make it good.
How many are you looking for?
I'd like up to 24.
Wow. And what sort of time commitment would it be?
Well, we were asking by this past Wednesday that people would, you know, apply so that we could form a group that was representative and have our first meeting on June 24th, but I think at this point, we're going to have to push that to July now. So, I think Anne and I are going to send out a letter to the, to the elementary fac, or elementary parents by the end of this week, I hope, again, asking them to show their interest in helping us with the LASIK Language Acquisition Study School Integration Committee.
And there was a second committee. I know you've told us about it. What's the second committee?
The second committee is the Cherokee Specific Parent Involvement Committee, parents that want to help integrate parents and students across the English and Mandarin program. And I'm less concerned about that because that was going to start up in the fall. Yeah, that's the second one.
Thank you, Dr. Hendrickson. I'd like in advance to thank all the parents for coming out on this beautiful night with their kids, got dressed up, and we're ready to go here, so.
The next, does that include the Superintendent's Report? The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on any item of their choice? Please proceed to the podium and ask, state your name and address if you'd like.
Good evening. I'm Lydia Steck, and I want to first start by thanking you for your, your gift of time and talent to this district. It's a, it's a big job you do, and it's, it's appreciated. I am here tonight to address your discussion on the Quest food service, and I bring with me Exhibit A, which I have, I feel that Quest is largely to blame for my constantly having to fill someone's lunch account and for the fact that he's making me feel like a shrimp next to him. So, he is clearly eating well at school. I, I have worked extensively with Quest, both as a parent, also as president of Everett. I was president of Everett and of District 67 APT for several years, and really got to know those at Quest well. I remember one instance when I was president of Everett in which there were concerns about the food, and, you know, Anne Simons jumped in right away and was eager to set up a tasting and meeting for parents to come and taste the food, and, and I will say that Anne and William and I might have been the only three that showed up. But anyway, we, I think if you, I hope you, like I, have had an opportunity to experience one of their tastings. I know they've done, they do them periodically throughout the year, the school year. They've always been incredibly responsive and eager to provide the best product and service possible, and I just feel like it's been an ongoing process. They've been around since I have, you know, started at Everett, and I have now kids in high school. And I just feel like there was always this mission to continually make sure that the food was nutritional, that it was, you know, good for the kids to eat, that the kids liked it, because while we're at home, it's really Anne Simons who sees what's ending up in the garbage. So, I, I also have two boys with food allergies, and with the explosion of kids with, with issues with food, I have found, and, and members of my family, my sister-in-law has, has children who have issues as well, Quest has been incredibly responsive to that and has really given our kids the opportunity to eat at school, which they never had before. It's been emotionally and socially, you know, so wonderful for them. So, I hope, I hope really moving forward that we'll really try to strike a balance between, you know, the very important nutritional aspects of what our kids are getting at school, the cost of, of, of those lunches, and really realistically, what our kids are going to be willing to eat. So, if we could balance those three, three things. So, thanks for your time, and I will allow him to make one short comment.
Thank you.
Well, I just think I just want to thank both Quest and Mrs. Simons for their continued support and help expanding the amount of things that both I can have, but also kids with allergies and different eating, eating challenges that they can eat. So, I really want to thank them again for making sure that there are things to eat there and really making there more than just a hamburger, that there's a whole variety of things I can have when I go to lunch every single day. And I'm going to be graduating in a year, and I'm really going to miss Mrs. Simons and both all the food products I can get in the cafeteria, so I want to thank them again.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the, address the On any topic? Saying none. We now move to reports and discussions. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Brueggemann and a very august group of teachers and students on a huge amount of work that they did, so I'll let Mrs. Brueggemann give us a, shed a picture in, on that.
First of all, let me just start out by saying I am actually just so thrilled to be here tonight. I mean, you can tell from the fact that it's summertime, and we have all these great kids and great teachers who are so dedicated to talk about this topic and share this with you. It just, it warms my heart, and from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you to all of you. I want to talk to you just briefly about what this is. They did a lot of work this year utilizing the theme of justice, looking at what is just and what is unjust. To explore this theme, we looked at three different models of teaching and learning. First, we looked at the Danielson Framework, which is the new teacher evaluation system. This framework shifts from teachers delivering content to going ahead and having students come up with their own questions and their own ideas about a certain topic. Teachers help by then facilitating the discovery and the research of those topics. Student choice is embedded into this framework so that students can follow their interests, and our lesson design had these very two important components: discovery and choice. Next, we utilized the standards from National Board of Teaching to design research-based lessons that then had core principles in mind. We also took the interdisciplinary approach, so taking science, language arts, social studies, and math, embedding them all together, not learning in isolation, but showing students how to explore a topic in depth. Students were then charged with making global connections and coming up with their own questions to research and to learn different solutions to problems in the world. Each grade level and each class had a different focus, had a different learning, and even had a different theme based on their interests. All of this took place at every school, and I just want to stop there. I am so excited that every school was committed to this, and I'm also equally as excited to tell you that it happened in Core, it happened in Enrichment, it happened in Explore, and it happened in Quest. So, any program and all of our schools. So, with that in mind, I am just so proud to introduce the kids who are going to be sharing about their specific learning. We're going to start out with two students from Everett, Catherine and Justin, who are going to come up and share their learning.
Hi, I'm Catherine Richmond.
And I'm Just. And I'm Justin Sexhour.
We're here to tell you about a reading and research project we did to learn about problem-solving and social justice.
We began by re, we began, we began by reading The Sneetches by Dr. Seuss. It's a tale about star-bellied and plain-bellied creatures, creatures called snee, sneetches. At first, the star-bellies discriminate against the plain-bellies. By the end, they stop being biased against each other.
Each of us worked with a partner to create our own red creatures and green creatures. Each set lived on one part of an island. My partner and I called ours the bingos and the bongos.
We called ours the triplewigs and the bananemen. We thought about their worlds from both points of view. We became our creatures negotiators. We found facts, problems, and solutions so that all the creatures could live together with justice.
We started by finding facts about our creatures, troubled social history, and each country's natural resources. In the past, the red group had treated the green group unfairly. The green group rebelled and started a new country across the mountains.
The creatures lived on the same island, but misunderstood each other and almost never saw each other. We learned how the mountains and winds affected their country's climates and natural resources. One country had a temperate climate, and the other country's climate was hot and dry.
The temperate country had lots of fresh water and good soil for growing crops, while the arid country had very little. But the arid country had other valuable resources and less pollution. We researched lots of topics like water, coral reefs, and energy sources.
After learning about our creatures' social conditions and resources, we determined problems we could begin to solve. We knew that creatures needed to learn about each other's cultures and begin to share their island productively and peacefully.
As lean negotiators, we worked together to find solutions for the creatures' biggest problems. We created peace treaties. In our treaties, we proposed ways for the creatures to get together and to learn about each other. We figured out trade agreements and how to share natural resources and developed new technologies to make all of their lives better.
It was hard work. We learned to negotiate so both sets of creatures had a fair agreement. This is the way we brought justice to the creatures on the island.
We understand that many people on Earth now and throughout history have had the same kinds of problems. We know more about negotiating peaceful resolutions for all.
They're so great. And now we have two more students coming from Sheridan School, Celeste and Lauren.
Hi, I'm Celeste Thomaselli.
And I'm Lauren Stanton. We're students in Ms. Miyamoto's 4th Grade Explorer cla, LA class at Sheridan.
This year, we spent a lot of time studying social justice.
In the spring, Ms. Brueggemann visit, visited and shared about unfathomable poverty around the world.
We created this video to show what we learned and to share a project that the Explorer classes did to increase awareness about ways people can help others in poverty with a focus on sustainability.
poverty, and they can't do anything about it.
Some kids have to spend at least six hours a day at a water for the family instead of going to school, so they end up learning less job skills.
Poverty exists because some people don't have access to good jobs, therefore, they cannot support their family.
Poverty exists because some people's jobs do not pay enough income to pay for what they need.
When people make so little, they face difficult choices like stealing versus going hungry or eating out of a dumpster or drinking contaminated water.
Everyone needs medical care though.
People making $2 a day don't have enough money to go to the doctor.
Many lives have been lost by not having medical care.
Poverty exists because there are some places where governments don't spend their money wisely, and they go into a crash.
Poverty exists because some government structures are set up in a way that does not provide a healthy economy for its citizens.
Poverty exists because in some places like China and India, the population is too big and people can't get jobs.
One of the main problems in countries in poverty is that there are so many people living in the country, and there aren't many jobs available, and since there are no minimum wage laws that severely affect the amount of wage they take in, and that means for eight hours of hard work a day, they get $2.
When Mrs. Brueggemann came to visit, we were all very sad to learn about poverty, but then we realized how fortunately we were that we're not all in poverty.
When we found out that she bought our Classycost Gear Bag, we were all very excited to find out about the different possibilities.
Cost Gear is a company that gives people in foreign countries a fair wage. The people make a blank canvas bag and get paid more than their usual amount. Many people in the world only get paid $2 a day. The people who make the Cost Gear bags earn $3 per bag. That's 10% of the cost of the bag. In each Cost Gear bag, there's a tag with a picture of the person who made the bag on it. This helps the buyer have a bigger connection with the person who made the bag. Cost Gear calls this one-to-one. We got into groups to think of meaningful designs for the bag.
My group designed the sun, which is about knowing you have a bright future if you keep your head held high.
We chose hope to be in the middle of the heart because we hope that this bag will help people who are in poverty have brighter futures.
This is a graphic poem that describes what happens when you buy a Cost Gear bag.
After it was finished at the end of May, we brainstormed ideas for what to do with it as a class.
We wanted to make sure to get it into the hands of people who will help it continue to do as much good as possible.
Our class thought of many great ideas, and even though school has ended for the year, we are still working on, we are still working to make the best decision.
We want to mention that the 3rd grade Explorer students also made a bag, and they will continue their work.
and they will continue their work with this project next year.
Thank you for listening.
Now Mr. Smith will come up and introduce his students.
Okay, I'll do this. For Cornelius. I am Ken Smith and I'm honored to represent Deer Path Middle School, the 5th Grade. And I also have four remarkable students here who will do a little short presentation. Thank you. Elvonne Muratolu and Kiki Wood, Haley Banta, and Brooke McDougall will then share with you what we accomplished. Thanks.
Can I go? What do I do? Hi, my name is Elvonne Muratolu and I was a student from Mr. Smith's 5th Grade Language Arts Class. You might think that we, me and my classmates, are a bit too young to be here, but we are actually quite extraordinary. For instance, I was born at an incredibly young age. All jokes aside, let's talk about social justice. This year, our class was given the opportunity to immerse ourselves in the study of social justice and the many faces it possesses. Our LA class pursued this topic in a number of ways, including novel studies, writing exercises, debate, and enmoto discussion forums. We also learned about social justice artistically through the Cause Art Program. This evening, we'd like to share with you just a taste of what we experienced. To do that, I'd like to first introduce Haley Banta, another student from our Language Arts Class, who will share with you some of the ways we incorporated novels in our study of social justice.
Thank you, Elvonne. Hello, my name is Haley Banta. As Elvonne already stated, justice, particularly social justice, became the connecting topic to much of what we studied this year, especially in terms of our novel studies. We began the year with the novel Bat Six by Virginia Woolf, a World War II-era novel told from 21 different perspectives. I think this is important because social justice depends so much on perspective and how much it can be molded. The subject of Japanese-American internment camps serves as the troubling backdrop to this novel. Another, another novel we read that allowed for many discussions regarding the issue of social justice was Nothing But the Truth by Avi Avi. This was a more contemporary novel that dealt with how the same event can be perceived as both just and unjust, depending on the stance you choose to take. Once again, perspective is very important. As our parallel novel study, we read the book Crooked River by Shelley Pearsall. Crooked River tells the story of Amique, a Native American who was prosecuted by the settlers' form of justice, which is something very foreign to him. I felt so sorry for Amique because he didn't know what was happening or what would happen to him because the settlers' form of justice was different from his own. Finally, we ended the year with the novel Touching Spirit Bear by Ben Michelson. This is the story of a troubled teenage boy and how the ancient system of circle justice allowed him to change his perspective toward being one of peace rather than one of violence. Each of these novels allowed our class to discuss and debate issues and broadened our overall perspective in regard of social justice and injustice. Thank you.
Um, thank you Haley. In addition to novel studies, our LA class also used the idea of social justice in our writing. One particular assignment was for each of us to write an allegory in which social justice would be represented symbolically, much as the Lorax by Dr. Seuss symbolizes the plight of our environment. The lack of availability of clean water in African villages, for example, adversely affects the lives of millions of people. With this in mind, Brooke McDougall has written an allegory that she would like to share with you now.
Thank you, Elvonne. My name is Brooke McDougall and this is my allegory, The African Savannah. We are in the African savanna, where the tall trees grow and the sun is as hot enough to slow down the cheetah. The sky has no clouds and the dirt is as dry as a white rhino's wrinkled skin. The food is scarce, so the predators have to hunt their prey in the night. From the cack of the hyena to the croak of the bullfrog, we are here in the African savanna. At the watering hole, there's a figure, an African elephant that is only weeks old. This little creature shows honor to the continent it stands upon with ears naturally shaped like Africa. Here, it slowly drinks out of the only clean watering hole for miles around. As a majestic beast feeds on wa- on the water, four antelopes are watching it nearby. These graceful antelopes, cousins of the gazelle, sorrowfully watch a small elephant drink. The beautiful antelopes haven't gotten clean water in months and are half-dead from dehydration. Almost getting enough courage to go have a drink, a large lion pounces out from behind a tree. The predator, the beast, the lion. He approaches without a word, ready to make his mark. Carefully, he comes closer and closer and closer. Then he attacks. He pounces, he roars, he runs. The antelope flee in terror while the elephant, while the elephant stays remotely calm, still drinking out of the little watering hole. The four antelopes dash and soar through midair without a sound. The lion comes bounding through the trees roaring. The little antelopes come closer to the eyes of the beast, then he pounces. The pain, the pain overwhelms the four now-dead antelopes. It comes so fast and so dangerous, but the little elephant is still there at the small watering hole, not knowing that the watering hole would still be, would soon be gone. It is where the sun is so hot it could slow down a cheetah and where the predators have to hunt their prey in the night. It is where the dirt is as dry as a white rhino's wrinkled skin. This is the African savanna. As you can see, my allegory was obviously about the water crisis and the lack of clean water in certain countries. So, the small baby elephant definitely represented us, the small percentage of people that actually have clean drink water. The little watering hole also stands for the small percentage of clean drink water that is in our world. The four antelopes are the larger amount of people that don't have a clean drink water and the lion is the death that somehow overco- overcomes them because of the lack of the water. I hope you keep this in mind.
Thank you, Brooke. One of the final activities our class did this year regarding social justice was to participate in the Cause Gear Cause Art Project, where we created designs for canvas sport bags. These bags came directly from crafters in India. We donated several of them to a charity called Beacon Place Backpacks, which will fill them with lunches and school supplies for children in need. Through the Cause Gear Project, we learned about microfinance loans, creating a sustainable source of income for those most in need and how we can do our small part to help serve the needs of others. Throughout this project, we posted our ideas on an enmoto site we called Deer Path Difference Makers. Kiki Wood would like to share with you some of the reflections that our classmates recorded on the site.
Thank you, Elvonne. My name is Kiki Wood and I would like to share with you some reflections my fellow classmates wrote regarding social justice. Elena L wrote, "I learned that no matter who you are, you can make a difference." I also learned that some people who live on less, that there are some people who live on less than $2 a day and that Lake Forest is a very fortunate community. Evan J wrote, "I learned that some charities are toxic and they don't provide a lasting change. Movement One-To-One provides a lasting change that doesn't make the recipient dependent on the charity." Liz G wrote, "I learned not to judge a book by its cover. I also learned that fairness to others is very important. Treat others as you want to be treated." Carson W wrote, "Even if you are in a small group, you can still make a big difference if you have the heart." William G wrote, "I learned that we are very fortunate as individuals to have the opportunities we have and not many people get to make the choices we do. They can only do one thing, working their whole lives for unfair wages." Grace M wrote, "I learned about unfair work circumstances in India and other places and I learned about Cause Gear. I want to do more to help others. You can do anything if you try." William O wrote, "I've learned that to help something or someone, you really need to care about the topic." Haley B wrote, "I, what I took away from reading, learning, and seeing things about social justice is that we are very lucky and we should try, we can and should try to help the world." Will D wrote, "You can spend just a short amount of time and make a difference in the world." And I wrote, "I learned people can always help no matter who you are or where you are from."
Thank you, Kiki. And thank you all for allowing us to share some of what we learned this year. We hope you've enjoyed our presentation.
And now finally, Ms. Lucas will come up and share about her students.
As my students began to look at life from a different perspective, they began by asking questions about one's responsibility in our world and began to see how they can make their own community or world an even better place. Using their mathematical knowledge, students drew conclusions in order to make a change. Some students had environmental interests and studied the effects of garbage waste or water waste, while others were interested in a sociological approach and studied the way we interact with each other. Other students were interested in our health and they studied how we could live safer lives. Students began forming questions based on their interests revolving around the theme of justice. My students here tonight are to discuss the projects that they've completed.
Adults just don't listen. Yes, I said it. Many adults think kids are just young minds that will eventually make a difference in this world. They think kids are just rugrats that just want to have fun and have no care here. Now, I know none of you think that, otherwise you wouldn't be sitting here in front of me. But we're here to prove that we have already made a difference. Now we know our minds are just nine and 10 years old, but we have made an impact on your world, my world, which is our world. Over the years, Ben Gridley and I, Will Elliott, have done a number of different projects inside and outside of school. However, these projects that we're here to talk to you about today are some that have required us to make decisions, be independent, show inquiry, and become leaders. These projects are some that we are most proud of, not only because we've made a change, but we are very proud of the steps we took to make that change. We've been calling this project the Data Analysis Project because at first it involved analyzing data and making conclusions based off this. But we think this project is better named Things Change. So be the change. After this, our class started thinking, what things must change in the world? Will they change for the better? And who is responsible for making those changes? After these ideas, we started thinking. We brainstormed research topics that we would later further explore. I personally chose traumatic brain injuries, TBIs, or concussions because I'm really into sports and safety is a big issue among athletes. My partner and I started researching statistics and were amazed what facts we could find off the internet and newspapers. Our first step wasn't getting a solid plan. We took two routes, one with our peers and one with the junior varsity football team. My partner and I noticed a need for more respectful and kind students after reviewing a school-wide respect survey. So, this was our path in the project. We concluded that students feel the least amount of respect from peers and feel the most amount of disrespect in areas that teachers do not monitor. Knowing this, we knew we could do something about it. In order to hone into the areas we could help, we created a more specific survey that the students could take. This survey helped us with our first plan. We created a respect spy that sought respectful students. And the concept of the respect spy is simple. All you have to do when you're spying is find respectful students going above and beyond with their character. The person who is spotted receives a coupon that allows to put their name on the school's good character board. We came across obstacles in our plan, just like anyone would expect. At this point, our group contacted Mrs. Leifman, the emotional wellness supervisor, and talked about new ideas we could develop. From our meeting with Mrs. Leifman, we decided to speak during the morning announcements about the importance of respect. My appearance may not show I am wise or have any experience in this world, but you should not judge a book by its cover. Anyone can make a change in a community. This project has taught me many things, but one thing that stands out is that through hard work and perseverance, I can make a difference.
I just want to very quickly take this opportunity to say a heartfelt special thank you to the teachers who worked so hard and were so dedicated to help their students as well as their students. So if we could give them just a huge round of applause for everything they did. And then I'd like to just make one final notation as well and to thank Dr. Weimer, who's been working with me on interdisciplinary approaches and working with teachers. So I wanted to take this opportunity and thank her as well.
Thank you very much for those fantastic presentations. We now move to Board Committees and Board Committee Reports. Of course, go ahead, sorry.
Colleen, um, first, thank you to all the students. You guys were absolutely fantastic. I know I've asked you before about how to roll this out and I appreciate your comments about how excited you were that people sort of bought into it. I'm obviously still new to this and still learning how curriculum rolls out in development. I was a little surprised. Is this curriculum? Is this choice? How does this work in terms of, it's fantastic, it's awesome, it's obviously making a big difference? How do we more fully roll it out so that whatever the, whatever everyone is, gets it? Versus it's sort, it sounds like it's a little bit of, some teachers maybe want to do it, others maybe don't. I don't know, can you explain a little bit about that?
I can, and thank you for asking that. I think we are looking at a variety of research-based approaches for curriculum and how can we best support teachers and their learning. And so we are asking teachers who are interested and willing to take some different risks to, to look at the curriculum and a better way in which to holistically of what we already, some of the basics that we were teaching in a variety of ways, to make it bigger, to make it better, to make it more student choice, and to go through different directions that students wanted to go. And then as we're sharing that learning, we're realizing that we didn't need more time in some of these things, that actually the learning is extended and students are deciding to do some of these things even in playgroups. The most exciting thing for me was there's a teacher over at Everett School who's a core teacher and she was teaching her students in this related theme, but she was doing water. Instead of teaching oceans, which is what they previously did, they took the whole water theme and then they decided to understand lakes, rivers, oceans, creatures within, and then understanding water sources, water issues. And so instead of doing a sliver, it ended up be- becoming interdisciplinary and, and larger that way. And then they could share all that learning with each other. And they created, this was my favorite thing. She stopped me in the hallway and she said, "Colleen, I am so excited about this. Do you know, there was a little boy who said to me that he was having a real difficulty with friendships and he is having a hard time finding friends. But when he started to learn about this, he found some friends in that area of interest, of what they were interested in, he was interested in as well. And they created playdates outside of school based on this water topic that they were getting together and researching on. And so he said to her, he said, "For the first time, I feel like I really fit in." And so for me, this is how we create those opportunities and we keep looking at the curriculum and say, "How can we make it richer? How can we continue student choice?"
And, and I'm sold on it. I mean, I, I get that, I think it's great. I'm just trying to understand, it sounds like it's a pilot and I'm trying to understand, is there a point where?
I wouldn't call it a pilot. This is what I would call it. When you do the right thing, the right way, everyone's so excited about it. And so people want to be part of all of this. And so I would call it a way that we look at teaching and learning in a different, with a different lens. And you, you should see all the teachers that came out now that they've been learning about some of these projects. They're saying, "Okay, how can we now do that within this unit or this way or with this novel or those types of things?" And so I don't look at it as a pilot, I look at it as good teaching and learning. Can I, can I maybe, I'm wondering if what you're asking and what you're saying, so the way I'm seeing this and very, to the kids who are still here and the teachers behind the kids who are still here, thank you very much as IB Inspired Learning is new, newer in general, certainly newer to this district. Very exciting, we can see, exciting for the kids, exciting for the teachers, and very exciting for the community. Speak on behalf of myself, very exciting for myself. I think what Mike is asking is-
I think what Mike is asking is, as you said, this is being done at all levels-
Yes.
-which is wonderful. Not every single teacher is going to implement it at the same speed, in the same manner. And I think when you get to the difference between curriculum and instruction, instruction varies. Curriculum, we have to teach our curriculum, we can teach it in a variety of ways-
Correct.
-and there are some teacher freedoms along with it. But I think the more and more these teachers see these exciting programs going on, the more they're going to come onto them.
We have a summer project coming up for those who are interested in learning more and doing some units. And we had so much of a response from those teachers saying that, yes, I want to learn more about this. And so we have representatives from every single grade level, every school, and several representatives at each school who will be coming to this training. You're welcome, thank you.
Are there Board members that have questions? Seeing none, we now move to Board Committee Reports, the first being the Board Education Committee. And once again, thanks to everyone who came and presented tonight. Leslie Fisher.
There is no Board Education Committee Report at this time. We will meet again in mid-September for the first time of the new school year. And at that time, Jeff Foker and Beth Clemmison will be joining the Board as Board Members. And we are also in the process of reviewing applications for two new committee, community members, rather, who will be joining our Board. So we are looking forward to reviewing those applications and welcoming them aboard in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. The Board Finance and Operations Committee, Rick Schuler is not here this evening. I'll just mention as a sort of associate member of the committee that Mr. Schuler and I had lunch a couple of weeks ago with a representative of Miller Cooper, who's the district's auditor. And this is a sort of first time of the Board having, trying to develop a more direct relationship with the auditor. And we discussed a number of things and it was really just an occasion to get to know them a bit better and, again, develop that relationship. So, it's a good thing of Rick to organize. Are there other committees that have met and would like to report? Seeing none. There's a lot less energy in the room now than there was when the kids were here. It seems kind of boring now. All right. We now move on to Liaison Reports, the first being the North Suburban Special Education District Report. Mr. Brokowski.
A meeting was held at the NSSED Governing Board on June 10th, 2013, which I was unable to attend. I plan to meet with the NSSED Board President in the next few weeks and will provide an update of any relevant issues at an upcoming Board of Education meeting. The next scheduled NSSED Governing Board Meeting is August 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Brokowski. The next is Illinois Association of School Board and Ed Red, to which I am the liaison. And there is no report this month. There will be a report coming up because there's a lot going on, particularly with pension reform in Illinois. And, well, there's not a reason really to update the Board every month. There are some things that affect the district longer term, which we'll be reporting on. Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Ms. Fisher.
The Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met in the previous month.
Spirit of 67 Foundation, Ms. Fisher.
Spirit of 67 Foundation has not met in the previous month. Thank you.
Other, Ms. Fisher? I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
We now move to Action Items, the first being Adoption of Resolution for Budget Transfers. Mr. Sima.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I will defer to Ms. Hermes on this important issue.
Thank you for saying it's important, but I agree, it's very hard to follow those student presentations to talk about budget transfers, but I'll do my best. Before you, the Board tonight, we do have annually, we bring all budget transfers that occur during the year. These do not affect the net expenses of the district nor the net revenue. These are simply transfers among line items. Typically, those are done either within a department or within a specific school. We utilize a lot of them for grant work. When we approve our budgets, we do not yet necessarily have all the final grant allocations. So we do like our grant lines to match up identically with the grant, so we will make some transfers for that. No one can make a transfer among accounts that they didn't have access to establish the budget for at the front end. So, for example, Joe can't just decide that, you know, Ingrid's supply budget looks really good this year and he needs a little something in HR. So it's really the budgets that they have control over at the start. Instead of bringing them one at a time throughout the year, we do compile and then provide a summary document that you see before you tonight. The school code allows for budget line transfers, which is outlined on the attached resolution. And we ask that you consider it for approval tonight.
Are there questions on discussion or discussion about this motion? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution for budget transfers?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second?
Could we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Foker?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
We have a quorum.
The next item on the agenda, Quest Food Management Services Contract Renewal, and I think we have some discussion planned.
I'd like to say I have a cool video, but I don't have a cool video. Do you have the clicker? Or do you have to do the arrow?
Yeah.
All right, now we're good to go. Thank you for having us here this evening, and I do have representation from Quest here as well. And what I really want to do is, it's been a while since we've come before the Board and we have a relatively new Board, and kind of give a program overview from top to down on what we do, how did we get here, and where are we going moving forward? So, that's our basic outline for this evening. So kind of high level, what is it that we're talking about? It's a school lunch program. It serves the students and faculty, K8. This is a district-defined program. We follow the basic umbrella of the district's wellness policy. The policy itself, I believe, was put into place several years ago. And when we bid this service in '06-'07, that was the guideline under which the committee developed the specs. Our current student meal price is $3.50 and our annual revenues are about $747,000. That's the 11-12 number because we still haven't closed June. Quest Food Management Services, they did win the RFP. They started here in '07-'08. This is a management fee structure-type program. So what that means is, is that Quest receives a, they have a fee that we pay for the management of the program. We collect all the revenue, we have all the expenses. So, Quest's fee is just for the management. So if we raise meal prices, that's revenue to the district. If the cost of food goes up, that's an expense to the district, is how that works. Quest incorporates direction from the district. So when I say it's a district-defined, if we said, "Dear Quest, we would like you to serve bananas every single day," they'll serve bananas every single day. If we say, "Quest, we would like to have organics, all 100% organics," they would do their best to serve 100% organics. What that means for a district, though, is that we're left with trying to balance the revenues and the expenditures and participation rates and so forth. I want to talk a little bit about that Quest selection. We did have a full food service committee and this involved two students, they were middle school students, probably, you know, graduated from high school, maybe now at this point, two parents, two school principals. Colleen Bruegemann actually was the principal of Everett School at the time and was on this committee. We had representatives from the business office and then we included Carol White because of the facility issues from buildings and grounds. When the committee took a look, this was the selection criteria, there was a financial bid price, so what was that management fee for the management of our program? More importantly, we spent a lot of time in depth of management. The reason that we came to bid this in '06-'07 for the start of the '07 year was we had a company in the district that we felt was unresponsive. We were receiving a tremendous amount of complaints. We had been out, you know, we'd been out in the buildings, we had seen what was being served and how it was being operated. As a district administratively, we pulled in the representatives for that company and said, "We're not happy." These are the issues that we're concerned about, we laid them out. We asked them to come back to us with a timeline and what their action plan would be. How would you address this? What do you suggest going forward? What has your experience been? And when they came back, they had nothing. Because what they had was a cookie cutter program and they weren't willing to make and tailor the changes that we needed them to make. And that was really the impetus of why we went up to bid. So, we spent a lot of time in depth of management. We took a look at their past performance and their references. And we didn't, when I say references, I don't necessarily just mean where are they currently serving. I talked to lost contracts. Why did they lose a contract? What suggestions were made? Why are they no longer there? How long were you with them? Those type of things. Looked at their business plan, quality of food programs, and financial stability. The committee work itself, I'm not going to go through and read all this, but I just wanted to put up what the extent of this process was. I don't know if they knew the extent of the hours and time when they volunteered or were selected, however this went for this committee, but this wasn't in the course of a couple of hours. This wasn't, let's come in a couple of afternoons and hammer this out, this was months. They spent days on some of these tasks and activities. We went onsite to several places to look at other programs, which is difficult because not every program has our program. Not other schools have what we have or want what we have. So you really have to go in and try to determine how much of that program is the way that district wants and how much is their ability to manage what that district wants. And that's what we had to try to discern. I want to just pause here kind of briefly, though, and I didn't even dare to try to put up what Quest, you know, their history or what they're about. I'm just going to give Mike a few minutes to talk briefly about that and then I want to dive into what our program looks like currently.
As you said, that's almost impossible to go after those-
You don't have to hear, you're not in camera.
Almost impossible to go after those kids, but I think those kids were a good indication of why I think Quest has done so well at Lake Forest. Those are not cookie cutter kids. This is not a cookie cutter curriculum. Everything you do here is exceptional and I think that it's a great opportunity for us tonight to show you a little bit about what we do to, our little part of their day, every day, exceptional. Quest has been around since 1985. My father started it with a woman named Sandy Castrezak. And they started the company, they had worked for big companies, which are now Sedexo, Marietta, and they saw a need for a company that could be more responsive. So they came in and they started the company in St. Joe's High School in Westchester. And our second account was Illinois Institute of Technology and then St. Pat's for Boys. And for a long time, we were very successful with the parochial school market. We do just about all the saints. We have St. Ignatius, St. Fire, St. Joe's, you name it. We do Carmel, we do Marist, we do Fenwick, we do a lot of the really high-end parochial schools. Well, my father got sick and I had done something else and I came back to the company and we were really not, we weren't completely saturated in the market, but we needed to do something different. So we started to try and bring our model out to the public school market. And at the time, there really was nobody that was doing things on behalf of the school community. They were worried about purchasing, they were buying things because they were getting huge rebates. And we came to the market with a different kind of program where we were, we told people what we wanted to make, we kept all rebates, all those kinds of things in the purchasing, went back to the schools, and we just truly became stewards of the program for the schools. And that's the kind of program that we have with you right now. It's our job to let you know, if you say to me, "I want bananas every day," it's my job to say, "Okay, we can do that and, you know, I can buy these bananas and this is what they're going to cost and this is what it's going to cost you because after a while, kids aren't going to buy bananas every single day." But this is what it does. And that's what our job is for your district, is to make sure that we can address it and I think we do an excellent job. We meet with, you mentioned APT, we meet with kids committees, I have been on more committees, to make sure that we are getting what you want as a group. You know, we reached out this year and did a survey and sometimes that can be a difficult thing because you don't always want to see everything you're going to get. But at the end of the day, we're about finding out what the community wants and delivering it to the district and making those kids happy so that they can be amazing like they just were. That's us in a nutshell.
And I think what Mike said is really important because the difference that I've noticed is when we ask for a change in, or we make a suggestion to Ann, you know, Ann might noodle it around with Mike a little bit or others that are in their company, but it doesn't need to go up four different levels before a decision is made. So often, we can see a couple of changes done within a couple of days and we have some examples of that. But what does our program look like as a district? We have two daily entrees, one of which is vegetarian every day. We have a fruit and veggie bar, minimum of five fresh on that veggie bar, veggie and fruit bar every day. Fifty percent or more of those are organic. For our allergy parents, we do have a peanut and tree nut-free kitchen and we do customize options with students with allergies. What that means is, is Ann is in very close contact and in a couple of cases, that that means that we send over a special meal over to some of our elementary schools because otherwise that child wouldn't be able to participate. So, Ann works very closely with those parents. One of the other recommendations of that food service selection committee was, is we've got to figure out a way to stop sending money with our students every day. So, the second major recommendation out of that committee was a point-of-sale system, which is the debit card system. So that, Quest implemented that with us in '07-'08 and we now have 2,025 registered users, which you might look at that number and say, "That's more than the number of students we have," and you'd be right. Because mom could have an account and dad could have an account and if grandma wants to throw money on, that would be great, too. So we do have more registered users than we have students enrolled. This year alone, we had 6,962 deposits. So, that's about 76% of our revenue was collected through the point-of-sale system. Just a picture, I don't have students or, you know, a nice video, but I did take a picture, a picture of our fresh bar at one of our elementary schools. In addition to the program I just described as a district, at the K4 level, we do two cold sandwiches or wraps every day in addition to the two daily entrees. We do the low-fat frozen yogurt treats once a month. We also offer a dairy-free option for those students can also enjoy a treat. We also have, you can purchase the fruit and veggie bar without purchasing a lunch. So we do have a few people that pack their lunch for home and then avail themselves of the fruit and veggie bar. skim 1% organic soy milk, all on that, offered daily. Deer Path Middle School, in addition to those other things we just mentioned, fresh salads daily, that's either fresh-prepared or it is made to order. Our deli bar is also made to order, we do have sandwiches already pre-made as well. Students can eat on the faculty line. We have a la carte and we also do a light breakfast. Typically, the light breakfast is your typical muffin, fresh fruit type of thing. Occasionally, we do throw on some hot items as well. Faculty line, we do have a special line and for those of you may recall, we used to have a faculty dining room at Deer Path and now that's been converted into our Friends from LFTV. And what we did is we moved a serving line out into the main DPM dining room, wanted, allowed students to eat maybe a more adult lunch if they so choose, but also, we want to get those teachers through quickly. We want to be respectful of the very limited lunchtime that they have, so they do get served first when they come through that line. We put two fresh-from-scratch soups on that line every single day and we run specialty menus. These are themed items, this might be a Cinco de Mayo or some kind of specialty to make it fun. We do new recipe tasting, so if we have a new recipe we want to roll out, we might roll it out on the faculty line. It's not as big a quantity as we would be rolling it out to the entire student body at one time to get some feedback on that. And we also run a to-go menu and this is part of our daily delivery, our route, where faculty can order salads and sandwiches, soups, we deliver to any of the elementary schools and to West Campus. And that's from Deer Path. And they drop it off just as they're dropping off their food on the normal run. I want to talk a little bit about some community partnership because I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with some of the things that we do. Starting this year, we received a request from Lake Bluff Elementary School. Some of you may know, Lake Bluff does not have a food service program in their elementary schools. What they asked us to assist them with is the development of their SAC lunch. So this is their free lunch, their free student lunch. And I could be wrong in this, so don't quote me, but I believe that they were making those in-house with volunteers. And they asked, "Could you help us out? You know, we would pay you for the meals and cover your costs or your labor and your food, kind of the good neighbor policy, could you handle maybe 200 lunches a month?" So we've been doing that from the start of the year. We do that at the Deer Path Kitchen and those are sent over to Lake Bluff every day. School community, what I would qualify under that is, you know, the Quest workers are really part of our family and our culture at each school. They participate in- They participate in Spirit Day, they do special promotions, um, prizes for all type of things. They address the students by name. And I had some great pictures, but I, I didn't have releases from all the, uh, parents, but some great pictures of the students with, you know, with the, um, specific workers in their schools because I think they really do appreciate and, um, every single one. APT, in addition to owing them deeply for the two volunteers that I probably got in that very long committee earlier, they've been invaluable. We have, um, food service liaisons from every single school, and Whipple and I meet with them several times during the course of the year. And that's really the feedback. So we, we come to that meeting, we ask what's going on in the schools, what can we help you with? What's the feedback? What are the concerns? Um, we also, um, Quest provides, um, sampling and comes to the meetings of APT, some of you have attended those. Um, for feedback and, and also to kind of showcase some of our new items because parents really don't have the opportunity to see what their kids are, are eating on a daily basis. A big part of the APT partnership is the annual National Nutrition Month, and that might look a little bit different in each school. Some schools, you know, may do something completely different, but all around the general theme. Nationally, there is a major theme. How you incorporate that might be a little bit different, but that's a big part of what goes on in the spring, um, with our liaisons. This is my only other picture, so, um, but this is, this is a little event that went on at Sheridan, and this was, um, healthy meal plate contest where students designed what they thought was a, a, um, healthy meal. And I think one of the great things about this is some chose to draw, some chose to cut things out. They, they did a bunch of different things. Um, and those were displayed on the wall, winners were selected, and they got a special day on the menu named after them. It would say Mike Simick's favorite on, you know, Wednesday the thirteenth or whatever it might be, and that was pretty exciting at Sheridan this year. I want to cover some of the financials of the program. When I look at program growth and someone asks, how, you know, how do you know whether or not what you settled to do with the food service and selection of Quest in oh seven, oh eight was successful? How do you know that this is the right direction to continue with? And when I look at program growth, I look at it that we have our survey and we'll go through that, but kids vote every single day. Parents vote every single day when they sit down with their student and decide, is my child going to eat today? And from oh six, oh seven, we've had thirty-seven percent increase in revenue. We did that while we decreased our enrollment nine percent. So what I look at is, I actually like to look at it as a spend per student. How much on average is each student spending? And we had an increase of fifty percent per student. So we increased from two hundred and forty-five dollars a student to three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per student. Now, just for those who might think, oh yes, but we also probably had meal price increases during that time, which we did. We went from two dollars and eighty-five cents to the current three fifty. So meal prices went up twenty-three percent. So when I look at that spread, it's more than just the increase in meal prices. Um, we're finding students are participating more from oh six, oh seven to eleven, twelve. We, we've grown the program. At the same time, we've been financially stable. When we looked at this program in oh six, oh seven, it was not financially viable. The expenditures were exceeding the revenues and, um, there had been no reinvestment in equipment for as long as anyone could remember. So I asked Carol White, how old do you think some of that equipment is? And her answer was, is, oh my goodness, I have no idea. Um, because it had been so long since they had replaced any of the equipment. So that was also one of the objectives that we had with the new program in oh seven, oh eight was we need to get this thing to a net positive or at least a break even. And we need to reinvest in our equipment or at some point down the road, we're going to have huge capital expenditures that are going to need to draw from the educational programs to cover. Now, I'm going to skip down to reinvestment in district equipment. So far to date, we've replaced ten pieces of equipment. That's usually two or three at a time depending on how much they are. And we typically buy those at the end of the year when I know that we're all good. Um, we have about fourteen pieces left. I mean, there's still a lot of pieces of equipment, um, that need to be replaced or, or looked at. So we've just slowly been kind of picking those off with a priority order. Um, for twelve, thirteen, I don't have the final numbers, uh, in yet because we haven't, not closed the month yet. But, um, with the changes that we'll talk about later with the action plan and the increased use of organics, this is probably our leanest year. I withheld on some of the equipment this spring, um, to end at a net positive of four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars projected. So I did pull back on equipment to do that. What that tells me is really with the changes that we've put in this, this spring, um, the hiring of executive chef, those type of things, that's not sustainable at our three dollars and fifty cents. So you will see that we will come back with a price increase, uh, recommendation in July. A couple of challenges, facility limitations. I love little old, dear little Sheridan School. But for, it is not a food lover's dream kitchen by any stretch of anyone's imagination. Basically what we have at Sheridan is, is a four burner. You have a four burner, I've promised them, they are next on the list for a convection oven, so I hope to get that in there this summer. One sink in a single door refrigerator freezer. So when you think about those space, and nowhere to go. I mean, it, there's, where are you going to expand it, right? You can't go in any direction. There's no space to expand that. Um, so where do you go with that? As we look at less processed, more fresh foods, we're going to need to consider refrigeration. And that's going to be very important. So we need to keep some of the space and facility limitations. I've already talked a little bit about the equipment. Um, we have some other things that we're doing. For instance, we're doing fresh grilled chicken, and we grill that at Deer Path. We grill those six pieces at a time. Because that's the, the current equipment that we have to do, you know, on stove top grilling. Now, is there a commercial unit out there where we could expand and cook, you know, grill more chicken at one time? Absolutely. But when I look at the, where that piece of equipment falls in the priority, it, it, you know, six is working. So there are some things that we could do and that we could improve on, but they're going to have to be slow and deliberate. Um, I talked a little bit about price point in the current meal price, parental support for that when we did our survey. Um, it seems like there's a little bit of tolerance. You know, we, there probably is a little bit of willingness to pay a little bit more to get some of the, um, continue some of the things we've put in the spring, and a couple of things that we plan to implement for fall. But there's not widespread support for a vast increase in the meal price, uh, according to the survey results. Um, another option for the district would be to subsidize. Now, that's where we were kind of unawares, six or seven years ago. But that is an intentional decision by the board to say, we're going to keep our meal price at three fifty, or we're going to set it at four, or whatever it may be. And if the program that we want to define and the program that we want to have exceeds in expenditures the revenue that we're pulling in, recognizing that the difference is going to come from other programs or other educational opportunities. And certainly that's, you know, the board's decision to make, but that's the district subsidy option. In November, December, we did launch a, a parent survey, I think, uh, Joe Malin for his analytical analysis of that. And Ann Whipple did an incredible job pulling together that information, getting it on the street. Um, we did have sixty-one to sixty-three percent in overall satisfaction on the program. Like I said, I kind of coupled those survey results with what's happening on the program growth. You know, are they eating every day? Are they buying? Is our program going, growing or not? Uh, we did have some identified room for improvement, nutrition, posting of information, awareness of what's in the, um, what the program is about. Lunch and wait times came through loud and clear at Deer Path, so we'll see some, um, changes on that. And then also a sliver on nutrition education. Um, there was a, a smaller theme, but definitely a theme of, um, like, um, parents that are interested in more nutrition education, and, um, we did pass that along to the educational, uh, side of the hallway. Overwhelmingly, the, the number one, um, response rate we received was for Quest employees themselves. Ninety-six percent of our parental, um, the parental response said they, that they, um, felt that the staff was friendly. Ninety-eight percent felt that they gave respectful treatment of children. Ninety-six percent found that they were responsive to their questions, and ninety-eight percent said that they were respectfully treated when they asked their questions. So now Joe's the statistical, you know, person, but he'll tell you that is really, really high. Um, and that echoes much of what we see on the administrative end, which is that when we ask for changes or we want discussions, they're immediate, you know, immediately willing to engage and work with us on any changes that we might see or desire. Um, I'm going to ask Mike to speak a little bit on the action plan. You've heard, uh, probably a little bit about this spring, but it's kind of an update on what the action plan entailed, but then also where are we, what things have already gone into place?
I neglected to introduce myself. I'm Mike McTaggart, and I'm the president and the owner of Quest. And, uh, I just want to tell you, when I give any kind of speech like this, Lake Forest is one of our first accounts because it's something we're exceedingly proud to be part of. It's a program that has come an exceptionally long way. Um, and we're going to tell you a little bit about what we did since the survey, and some of it was in, in, in process before. Um, so what we did was, um, we have made a concerted effort to move away from processed items. You saw some of the items that we, we made change for, a couple of good examples. Um, we were serving a barbecue ribette. It's a kid favorite. They love a ribette sandwich. Um, but that was a processed item. So earlier this year, we brought in smoked butts. We cook them fresh, we pull them, and now we serve a pulled pork sandwich, which you got to taste a little bit earlier. Um, another great example is the chicken tenders. Um, kids love their chicken nuggets. They're used to a small little chicken nugget that's pre-processed. Um, we never served the ones that I'm describing, but we have made a huge leap forward now. Our chicken, the chicken tenders that the kids eat now are five ingredients. Their chicken tenders, their milk, their flour, uh, panko breading, um, egg, and a little bit of salt and pepper. And they're made and baked fresh on a daily basis. Couple of things that we didn't really talk about that I think are important to note, um, we do not fry anything. Um, we have not used trans fats to fry anything. We don't use a fryer at all, um, and we don't use trans fats to cook with either. Um, the next thing that we did, you know, uh, menu planning's on the bottom, but I think she brought up the facilities. And you have to plan if you're going to try and move fresh food healthily or safely to the locations that we're doing. So what we, we had to be really deliberate and not just jump into all of these things. You can't, you know, it's one thing when you're just taking a frozen product and putting it into an oven and heating it, very little risk. You have to really plan things through. So through these committees, over the course of time, we have really spent a lot of time trying to develop the plan to do it within the district without going and asking for equipment that we probably couldn't afford at the time. Um, so some of those things that we've been teaching are knife skills. Um, we're making a lot of our sauces and dressings. Um, we're teaching seasoning, we're teaching proper roasting of vegetables. Um, we just had a little, uh, life experience in there. We were talking about the, the panko breaded chicken, and one of the, the cooks that was, I think, at Sheridan, it wasn't quite brown enough. They're not, you, you know, you have to take the time and train, and that's what we've been doing since February. And, uh, that's why a chef was an important move to, to bring on here. Um, another, another thing that we saw a lot of desire for was ingredients and nutritionals. So we did everything to get that information out there so that people can now go online, look at what they're getting, and, um, and know what their, what their children are, are eating on a daily basis. Um, uh, she brought up something, uh, uh, something about our, our ability to, to make change. Um, the two types of menus. So we want to, we're kicking off this new program. We want everybody to know what it is, and we start using big verbiage and, and I've got, I, we also do the Latin School in Chicago and, and, uh, Francis Parker downtown in Chicago. And so I've got some chefs down there who have grandiose ideas and they use a lot of big verbs. So we're putting seasoned roasted peppers and this, all these things on the menu, and we're doing them, but the kids don't know what they are. And the teachers don't want to have to go through it with them on a daily basis. It's taken up a lot of time. So within, I think, two days, we came out with another menu. So now we've got one for the parents kinda, and one for the teachers and the kids. And I think it just goes to, to our ability to be responsive. There is nothing that we won't do for Lake Forest. I mean, you can have, you have my word for, on that. I think we've showed it over the years, and, uh, given the opportunity, we'll show it every single time you ask us to. I think that's, oh.
Let me just hit the metrics, because whenever I can grab some, I like to throw them up. But, um, we did launch those in February, March. We didn't get them all up right away, you know, it took a while because as we were rolling out new product, we keep adding to it. Um, but I had Janice pull these for me this afternoon. So we launched that roughly around February twenty-fifth. We've had one hundred and forty-seven unique views. So that's not, you know, if Mike went on ten times, that's recording him as, as once. Maybe if he had two computers, it was registering as two, but primarily one hundred and forty-seven unique, unique page views. The average time spent on those pages was one and a half minutes. I will say in the double menus, we got the sweetest email from Ingrid Weimer and says, I love the new menus. They're so descriptive. But it's taking too long in the morning for the teachers to walk the kids through the menu. We can't waste that amount of time. Can you please make them more simple? So we did.
And I think, I think those were two important things to do. You know, you have children, parents and children who need to know. And I think that was a big step and an important thing that we did this year. Um, we kind of talked about this, but we, it, we had to do this deliberately. We had to think things through. We couldn't just make this a giant leap. So our goal was to do one item per week. Let's make a switch a week because you just can't teach an entire staff everything in a, in a second. So that's, that's our goal, and that's our continued goal, is to find items, make them better every single day. That's the goal at Lake Forest. Um, it's a couple of things that we've talked about for the, for the new year. Um, we are going to, we're, we're placing anything that we cook, um, it, besides hamburgers and things with ground turkey product. It's, it's healthier, it's better for them. The kids have, have enjoyed it, and before we give it to them, we have taste testing so that they can say, we like this. That's the whole key to making change, in my opinion, is to have buy-in. If you've got a student food committee and you're going to change your, we did it with pizza crust initially. If you're going to change your pizza crust, and now it's going to be whole grain, which we all are, are after, the kids have to like it. So we showed them, this is what you used to have, these are some of our options, and we move forward from there. Um, we're looking into eliminating nitrates and, uh, we're replacing, we had a, uh, slushy product which we, uh, probably needed to make a little bit healthier. Um, fruit and veggie days is, we talked about nutritional education a little bit. We have a dietitian that came out, I don't know how many times, three, three ti- four, three or four times, and showed fruit and vegetables and just sat and talked to the kids, introduced new stuff, and we had a great response. The kids came up, we had them trying things they probably never had tried before, and that's just trying to introduce them to new fruits and vegetables and get them to accept it. And I'll tell you, five years ago, I was a skeptic about this kinds of things, but this generation is expecting healthier, better foods, and, and when you serve them to them, they respect it and they see a value. For the coming year, I, I had mentioned, um, Latin and, and Parker. Um, although independent, they are very high-end, high-end type programs. And they want to spread the program. We've built a program down at the Latin School where our goal is one ingredient. Everything's a plant or an animal. There's nothing ever processed. We don't buy anything frozen. We make every jam from scratch. If you buy a, eat a pickle there, we pickled it. You make sa- uh, buy sour, eat sauerkraut, we made it from scratch. We're not at that point here, but what we do have is a commitment from them. They know how important Lake Forest is to me, that we can use their chefs a little bit. And they've been out here a few times already this year to try and teach some of these skills so that we can bring as much of the program as we possibly can and make sense. I mean, it's, it's got to make sense. I know you're not trying to dip, or in the past, we weren't dipping into educational fund. I was always told that that was my, pretty much what, my directive. Make sure that you can do this, and we can buy this equipment and not dip into the educational fund. Um, we've expanded the use of organics where they make sense. Um, our goal is fifty percent. I think we probably exceeded that this year. The market was pretty good. It's getting easier to buy those kinds of things. There's a lot more on the market than there was even a year ago that's healthier and better for our kids, and we'll keep introducing it every single day we can. And we want to make sure that we're doing as many tastings as we can. Uh, we did a lot. I, I said we increased them. I don't know how we will, but that's always a goal is to, is to make sure that we've got complete buy-in and that we're listening to everybody when we make changes. It's an example of one of the tastings.
It was a tasting at Deer Path. It shows a little, shows up a little bit better on the computer, but basically it's the same format. Um, this one, I think, was part of fruit and veggie day. We also have, I have a picture that shows, you know, we did a noodle tasting of different kinds of, of noodles that we were rolling out. So, um, APT has been very, very supportive of these. Um, what I mean by that to some extent is they apply, supply some of the volunteers to man the tables, serve the food, um, get some feedback, those type of things. So, um, we look forward to some of that as well next year. Um, like I said, loud and clear, things are too slow at Deer Path. Um, I should have mentioned things in green are things that we either started or have completed during this school year, the things in, in red are, or things in, in black are for next year. Um, this year, we, um, spread some of the popular, popular items among more lines, so that helped a little bit. Um, but the biggest change is going to be, and I hope I'm not stealing Deer Path's thunder, but we're having a new lunch period schedule next year. I think this year we were compressed into three lunches, where next year I think we're across four. That will make a huge difference in line speed, so, um, we look forward to that. Um, we also want to look at expanding the marketing program. One of the things that came through as part of the survey was, um, there wasn't a familiarity with some of the things that we already did, um, on either the features of the debit card system, um, how you can automatically reload, or you can, um, you know, I don't want my child, my child to purchase this. Those type of things that we can preload into that, um, into that system. An informational brochure, um, and, and Quest had already done a, a good deal of work on this last fall, but we decided with our survey, we didn't want to get our informational brochure out there and then survey them a month later and say, hey, did you know about? Because we just gave them, you know, all the information. So instead, we held back that informational brochure. Um, but we hope to put that out, and that would be available at like the parent teacher conferences and the open houses, just to kind of distribute some more of our information. Um, we like to be a part of, on both the new website that the district is launching and also add regular food service, uh, blurbs. We've done a little bit of that this spring, um, to some of the communications that go out district-wide, and of course, we'll rely on Ms. Ann Whipple for her assistance in that. district-wide, and of course, we'll rely on Ms. Anne Whipple for her assistance in that. This kind of concludes the, the presentation part, and I know this was a really big lead-in to the renewal. I do have some specific things on the renewal. It could be your pleasure. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, or I could also introduce the renewal at the same time.
Are there any board members that have questions?
Jennifer, who owns food service within the district? Where does it fall under responsibility?
Business office, our office.
Would you consider that a core competency?
No.
Should, should there be something, a committee or something that does own?
Well, I would look at it, I look at it similarly to transportation, which is also optional. Food service is also optional. I look at, we run some of these other programs from kind of a district end. We do get the input. I mean, we don't have a transportation committee, talking about transportation. We do get the input through the liaisons and the APT, which is, is great, and I, I think it has worked fairly well so far.
But with all the feedback from the surveys, I, I just want to make sure that we're putting forth the proper direction to Quest or whoever the food service provider is that's truly reflective of food standards and nutritional, you know, standards and things like that. I'm just curious, who sets that direction? Is that something we rely on Quest to provide to us? Or is that something we provide to them? And if so, who's the expert within the district to do that?
Right. I think it's really done in partnership, because I think we're really setting kind of an overall direction. We started big umbrella-wise by the wellness policy. And the wellness policy, you know, we didn't, I didn't sit on that. The business office didn't sit on that. You know, parents, wellness teachers, people from the healthcare industry developed that overarching umbrella. From there, if we were to redefine the program, I think we would need to probably seek somebody out. Now, Quest certainly has a dietitian. This is certainly their area of expertise. I think parental input would be important, but we're going to need to find what that balance is, because we are serving a really broad spectrum of, of students and parents. And, you know, I, I think, to your point, that's important, but we also need to understand, we could go to one extreme or the other and probably lose a bulk of our programs. I've actually probably heard just as much feedback this spring about the changes on the, "Can we just bring back normal kid food?" I get that a lot, and it's like, "Well, just, just try it. It's, it's better, normal kid food, and this will be the new, the new normal." So i- if a, if a redefining of the program needs to occur, we're going to need to be very thoughtful about who we bring to the table on that. And if it's seeking expert help, I mean, we would do that, the same thing that we would bring in a math specialist, or you would bring in, you know, you know, someone in the language arts program that really is their expertise to define our program. I mean, certainly, we can rely on some assistance requests, but if you're defining your program, that's a little bit different.
And then, Jo, how many respondents were there? I saw the percentages of, of the respondents, but what percent of the district actually participated in the survey?
November, December, but...
Is there going to be a follow-up so we can compare with all the changes that we've made, which are great?
We have talked about a follow-up, shorter, because we did hear it was a little long. We talked about two things. One is a follow-up on the changes that we've implemented and yea, nay, or indifferent on them. We could do that a little bit too on what we see being purchased or, or what's not being purchased, but also on the, a little bit dive into some of the questions a little bit deeper, because some of them were a little bit like apple pie. I mean, they were like, really, you know, "Would you like to see less sugar?" "Well, of course. Who's going to say, 'No, I want more sugar. Please, please put more sugar in, in all of my food.'" So we need to probably, we, we started with this to kind of get our, our themes, and Jo did a great job of pulling that together for us. But yeah, we could probably do a little bit more targeted survey on, okay, specifically, what does that mean for you? And where do you put that in the priority of things?
I can add to that. We had 58% of our elementary families, and I think it was 17 or 18% of our Deer Path Middle School families respond. We had the survey up for about two and a half weeks. We sent it out, I believe, four times. We spoke at the APT about it, so unbelievably high response rate, higher than any survey that I've ever been associated with over the time. And as you can see, a vast majority of elementary parents and the stronger voices were from elementary. I think we tend to find, by the time the kids get to middle school, they make more of their own choices. Even in some of the data, if I remember correctly, parents were very involved with children's choices at the elementary level. By Deer Path Middle School, it was much more the child's choice. But as you do know, our families can monitor what their children eat, and they can self-select through a monitoring program that we do have through the district. So if you don't want your child to eat certain things, you have the option to specify that. And Quest has been wonderful about making, ensuring at the point of purchase that children don't eat those types of things.
Ms. Fisher?
I'm just going to take a few moments here, because this is of great interest to me and I know many of us tonight. I am delighted with this report and the thoughtfulness that not only went into tonight, but that has gone into the past several months and the planning on both of your parts. It's been enlightening for me, really appreciative of it, and things are definitely, I think, moving in a positive direction. Not that they weren't good before, but when you look at and you see from our perspective and perhaps the community or the parents' perspective, that the last time a committee via the board has met to discuss food in our district has been 2006. There has been so much progress made since then that we all are privy to. Things have changed leaps and bounds. You know this, and we know this, but because we take the onus on our own part and haven't done anything amongst ourselves, I would say that that's something we, as a board, should be doing to give you more direction, because what you're telling us is, "You can work with us in any way," and that's very valuable. I would also echo what Lydia, Mrs. Steck and William said earlier. Anne Simons has been fantastic. I too served as Everett APT president after Lydia did, and she came to almost every single one of the meetings I ran and gave parents a different food sample. She is, everyone keeps using the term responsive. Quest is responsive, and I know from several parents who have kids who are affected by allergies, it is very, it's more than important, it's critical, that someone like her is there. Can you hear me? I don't know. Maybe they shut me off, because I'm supposed to stop talking, but I'm going to keep going. I do have a couple of questions here. When you talk about what's going on at Latin with the chefs there and how some of the foods have one ingredient, I was even thrilled to hear about the five ingredient chicken nugget. What are their prices per lunch?
They're on a board plan. So they're, they're on a board plan. So kindergarten through eight, everybody is included, and there's, I couldn't even dial down to a number. I would say $6.50 to $7.00 would be my...
Unfortunately, that's what I figured.
But we, but yeah, but there's so many, there's a lot of moving parts in that one.
It's mandatory. They don't also, they do not bring lunches from home, so you know you're going to have the mass every single day as well. It's included in your tuition and board.
That was one question. When you said, and I hadn't caught on yet to the green versus the black writing, that's okay. When you talked about eliminating nitrates, because this, I know, was a sticking point last year, have you eliminated them? Will they be eliminated in the fall? What is the answer on that?
Okay, the answer is that we have not served them coming here yet. We had some, we had, I believe it was a hot dog and possibly a ham item that had them. We have sourced items that we can eliminate them with if we want to serve a hot dog. Currently, it is about four times the cost. So these are things that I think, if that's a goal, that we can absolutely address very readily. If it's important, we can make that decision. I think, I think that's the kind of thing that we have to kind of get down to, is what's, what's the guideline? What do we want to do? And we can definitely eliminate them if the, if the desires are.
Okay. And then again, you can, as a parent, go in and say, "I don't want my kid to have a hot dog."
Correct.
Okay. I'm almost done. I'm sorry. Very excited to hear about the four lunch periods versus three next year. That is going to be, I think...
So are we.
I'm sure you are. A big help.
Deer Path Administration.
Okay, yeah. Let's see, almost done. Okay. All right. Yeah, I guess that's done. Do you do any, as far as access to a dietitian?
Mm-hmm.
That you have on staff?
Yes.
Is that an additional charge?
No, no, no.
Could we, as a committee that I'm already forming in my mind, work with that dietitian?
Absolutely. She's been involved in, in a few of the APT meetings, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I could go back just a second on Jeff's question about the management. I should say, I am not a nutrition expert by any stretch of the imagination, but actually, my very first job working for school districts 17 years ago was, was managing a food service. So, and I've pretty much had it ever since. So up to Naperville's 21 schools with food service, up to Lake Forest as well. So I've been managing food service for a long time.
I wanted to add a couple of thoughts, and I know Beth Clementson, who's not here, shares some of these concerns and some of it's echoing what Leslie said. First, thank you both. This was a fantastic presentation, and my kids don't eat. They eat what I pack them every day, much to their chagrin, but I learned a lot in this presentation, and thanks. It looks like there is great, great progress being made. You mentioned the survey, and I guess I sort of looked at it a little bit differently. I certainly noticed the overwhelming support of the Quest employees, and that's certainly a tribute to you folks. I didn't personally think that 61% approval from parents and 39% approval from students was particularly great. So, and I appreciate what you're saying on the dollars. My sense is that parents make their decision largely on convenience, and they may be well fully dissatisfied or satisfied, but they really decide on convenience. Are they going to make lunch, or are they going to buy lunch? So I really want to strongly echo what Leslie requested, I think. It's been six years or seven years since, I guess, one of the things I learned, I didn't realize that the district defines the program, and I think that's fantastic. I personally agree wholeheartedly, Leslie. I think it's time for the district to redefine it. It's a hot topic. There are people who love it, and there are a lot of people who don't. We all hear about that every day. So I, I do think it's time to formally get the committee back together. In my opinion, the survey results shout for that, that there is room for redefining. The whole issue of what's healthy, and just simply what is the word healthy even mean, has come so far in six years that, that, that's separate from the contract renewal that you're asking for. So I would really strongly encourage the district, the administration, to formally get a committee together in the fall to define what we want.
Jen, thank you very much for the presentation. We obviously appreciate it. And it seems like a lot of good things have come out of this survey this year that, you know, suggestions and everything. And I would say that I'm also a little confused by the 98% versus the 62% approval in the employees versus the, versus the food. But I guess, I share the other board members' sort of question or concern about the way this has all developed. My impression is the survey sort of came out of some specific parents that requested things and kind of pushed this and everything.
Actually, the survey was determined during the middle of last year, because periodically we review all our programs, and if you have continual programs. So actually, before, and I think I know the parents that you're talking about, before they had contacted us, Anne and Whipple and I had already had discussions about launching a survey of program review.
Good.
So certainly, we included those, as well as the APT when we put up the survey doc and solicited feedback on those questions.
Okay. Well, that's good, because I think, I just, it shouldn't take parents to get that sort of upset or engaged or something like that. We, the board also have a policy, this 6.5, which sort of defines the wellness product, project, or policy. But also, it says that there's supposed to be reports to the board on a regular basis on nutritional goals and also how, what other districts are doing and everything. And I've been on the board for a couple of years, and we've never had one. And so I'm glad that we're doing this today. I think if you look at the actual policy, there's a lot more that could go into the report. But I guess part of the thing is, the question is, how's policy developed? The wellness policy specifically says the board's supposed to be engaged, so how do we do a better job of that, you know, in the future?
Well, actually, the wellness policy isn't, it, the food service is a subset of the wellness policy. The wellness policy is actually much, much larger, as you can tell, because it's one of a board policy.
I was on the committee that wrote it.
But, exactly, but it really, it really is stemming a little bit more from the curricular aspect with additional guidelines that also cover snacks in schools and food service. I believe the policy was actually readopted last July by the board, if I'm not mistaken, so...
That's right. And there's a section called monitoring that says you're supposed to report regularly to the board. So that's just a point I'm trying to make. Mike has the policy right there.
I've got the policy here. July 24th, 2012, it was reviewed, and there's a part of the policy that, that states that there is to be periodic implementation data and/or reports to the board concerning this policy's implementation sufficient to allow the board to monitor and adjust the policy. Now, one of the things I'd say is, in, in looking at this, while I should finish, "The report must include without limitation each of the following an assessment of the district's implementation of the policy, the extent to which schools and districts are in compliance with the policy, the extent to which the policy compares to model local school wellness policies, and a description of the progress made in attaining the goals of the, the policy." Now, when you look at what the policy says as far as its goals, the goals are very, very broad, that the schools will support and promote good nutrition for students, that the schools will foster the positive relationship between good nutrition, physical activity, and the capacity of students to develop them, develop and learn, and that the nutrition education will be part of the district's comprehensive health education curriculum. So I think there is, there is, if there is interest in creating a greater specificity of the goals, I, I do think that the food is just one part of, of a pretty broad wellness aspect that permeates. So it's, it's education, it's physical activity, food is just one more part of that. And I guess what I'd suggest is that in the coming year, that we task one of our administrators to conduct that comprehensive review and report back to the board on that.
Other questions or comments?
I have one more question. I guess it is. One of the things that a lot of people at the time, the Child Nutrition Act, which was in 2004 when it came up, that's when Twinkies left the curriculum. And it was, you know, thought to be the end of the world and the end of, I'm exaggerating, obviously, but, I mean, you know, pretty pronounced, "No more cupcakes for birthday parties," and so on. But there's also a lot of speculation that kids wouldn't eat certain kinds of food, and that there was a pretty broad sense that parents will only pay so much for certain types of food. And some of those things have been debunked, you know. For example, kids eat from the salad bar on a really routine basis now, and, and seek that out even. And that, that if you serve, if you don't serve deep-fried food and serve five-ingredient baked chicken nugget, that they'll eat those just as readily as they will many other things. In terms of the price, what sort of, what sort of movement has there been on parents' willingness to pay? You know, we're at $3.50 right now to pay significantly more for a significantly more robust, organic lunch entree for their, for their children?
Not significant. Now, we've had our price constant for two years, so this would, this would be going into the third year if we didn't make a change, so naturally, we may have a price increase either way. Definitely not anything over a dollar would be supported. Now, it does range, when you look at the survey results, and I believe the survey itself, if anybody's interested in the entire document, is on the website, but I think there was like a 20% to 30% that would be interested in, and up to 50 cents, and there was another 20% or 30% that could support 50 cents to a dollar. So you're probably looking at still less than 50% of your respondents that are willing to spend anywhere from, you know, zero to a dollar more. And then obviously, there was some outliers, but I didn't find that, you know, we could that, you know, we could do a Latin program, and all of a sudden, we're going to be at $7.50 or $8. I don't think it's going to happen.
Has there been a school, a public school that we're aware of that has tried that, that $6 mark?
$6 price point, not that I know of.
And don't most of the public schools, at least neighboring us, they don't have kitchens, right? They bring in food from the outside.
A great menu, yeah.
Seeing no other comments, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very helpful. Appreciate it. May I have a motion to approve the Quest food management contract for 2013, 2014?
I was confused. I thought we were just talking about the program. If we're actually going to the contract, I haven't contacted.
Actually, I believe you're correct. I think Jen has more to say. Okay, go ahead.
Retake out my materials.
Speaking of food, I was getting hungry, but.
As I said, that was, that was a really big lead-in, like I said. But we do have a renewal in front of the board tonight. The original contract with Quest was a three-year contract, especially when you're trying to build a program. We've been doing one-year renewals from that point on. What's before the board tonight is a one-year proposed renewal fee, $50,592. That's the management fee that I referenced. That's at no increase from last year.
And includes our dietitian consultant.
I'm guessing we're not going to get her 100%, but I certainly think she's, she's for loan. And I really do have to say thank you to the Latin School, because of course, too, that was a nice, free, they did provide a chef to us, visiting chef for February and March, before we brought our chef Mark, if some of you have met him, maybe saw him tonight, on full-time in April. So they did lend a chef program for us, which was outstanding.
Other comments or questions?
I suppose I have a comment or question. To the Quest folks, thank you all. And I've had, you know, a few conversations with you about milk and other things, and I agree with what's been said. You guys are fantastically responsive. It's a, more of a question of process than which company. It's been six years since we rebid it. Realistically, it's a bit late in the game in June to not approve the one-year contract, but I'll likely tie my yes vote to, we need to rebid it, because it's been six years, in my opinion. That's too long for any contract to not be rebid, in my opinion. So the question is, is there plans to rebid the contract next year?
There are not plans. We've talked about it administratively, but when we look at this particular program, what we're looking at is, is an expertise and also willingness to adapt to what our program is. Now, if you recall, that's why we came to this place in '06, '07, because they weren't willing to make the changes that we want. So when we look at bidding, we say, and I think we've had similar conversation before, are we unhappy with the service they're providing? And then let's look at, if we're unhappy with the service that they're providing, why is that? Is it because, one, they're not willing to make changes, or work with us, or partner with us in that discussion? That would be one thing. And then clearly, I would be saying, let's bid it immediately. We wouldn't be here with a one-year renewal. Or are we unhappy potentially because we've decided, or we've made a determination, that we need to further change what the guidelines are? And I don't think that necessarily is on Quest, and I don't think that's necessarily on the rebidding. I think the onus on that is on us, to define and put that program out there. I don't think, you know, it, I would question, I think we've got a decent price. You know, we're talking $50,000 for the management of this. I could pull the bids from, from prior. But I would be concerned that if we, we did bid the program, and we got somebody that maybe come in at a lower bid price, maybe someone would do it for $38,000, $42,000, or whatever it might be, are they going to be the type of company that is willing to make the changes that Quest is willing to make? Or is it because of rubber stamping and putting in a cookie-cutter program?
So I'm still learning, and I regularly will admit that. Are we required to go with the lowest price?
We are not. In, in the, when you look at, I put up those criteria for a successful company, bid price is one, is one of the components. But then it's also the depth of management, and those type of things.
So the great responsiveness that we've had, we absolutely could take into account in their favor?
Absolutely.
I, I would continue to encourage that after six years of a contract, that we'd rebid it.
Can I, can I just pose a question back? What would be the goal of rebidding?
Well, could I just join something? I, I think these are separate decisions, and we need to have lunch to serve to the kids in September. The longer-term goals for the food program are very important to all of us, and I think are not really the same decision. So if I could just point that out. May I have a motion to approve the Quest food management services contract?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
And Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
We have a motion that carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, approval of workers' compensation insurance policy renewal. Mr. Simak.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I would like to again call on Mrs. Hermes, related to our workers' comp insurance program.
You're so lucky, because I have a 15-page PowerPoint that I would like to cover. All right, workers' compensation insurance, we do, this is an annual renewal. We do utilize the service of TA Cummings. They bring our, our program out to market. You see, they do have three bids in front of you. They are recommending, and we concur with the renewal with our existing carrier. We did not have a stellar year this year, let's just say that, as far as work comp. And you can really see that evidence when you look at the Illinois Experience modifier. As you get close to one, you get close to average. And you can see that this year, we went from 88 to 86, so that was a better improvement, from 1112 to 1213, which meant that our loss ratios were a little bit better than average. Good thing. Good thing for rates. Unfortunately, for 1314, our mod factor went up to .94. So we did not have our, our best year as far as loss, and unfortunately, that did have impact on our recommended renewal. Looking at an overall premium increase of 6.9% due to both the rate changes, and as I mentioned, those adverse losses. So I do recommend the renewal through TA Cummings with Hartford.
Discussion, comments, questions?
I just had a quick question. It said in the, in the information we were given, that our compensation coverage is combined with District 65. Do, do we need to make sure they're approving this as well at the same time, or is that not important?
It is not important. We actually have what's called an informal buying group. So it is not a co-op necessarily. We're not by bylaws. It's just generally, we're going to go out to the market together. It doesn't, it's not binding on either party. We've been in this semi, this informal group since 2004. But they don't, don't combine our loss experience, which in this year may have not been our best bet. Doesn't require any membership, doesn't require that they approve it. They have already, by the way, approved their insurance for next year, but our decision is not dependent on whether they did or not.
So it doesn't affect our rates if they choose not to participate with the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Seeing no other comments, could I have a motion to approve the workers' compensation insurance policy?
So moved.
A second? Could I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is the approval of the CLIC liability insurance contract. Mr. Simak.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And these are some things that we've got a number of new board members, and one of the things I wanted to point out is, these are annual renewals, and they're really very perfunctory. But to go through them one by one, has, it gives all the new board members an opportunity to see them for the first time. So in coming years, if there is a desire to put them in the consent agenda, because we've already been through them, then it will make the board meeting go more quickly. But this is an annual review of our liability insurance. Mrs. Hermes?
All right. This is one of the things, this is our property casualty. We also have our auto, those type of policies. We do participate in a formal cooperative for this service. This is the CLIC, which is the collective liability insurance co-op. It is a very large insurance co-op. It is only school districts, so made up of people just like us. There's 172 other school districts involved in this cooperative, and those represent 814 schools. So this is very large. And it's important for that, because we, this is one, not only economy of scale and purchasing power, but we're also able to get some coverages that on our own, we most likely either wouldn't be able to get, or we're able to get them at a, at a rate that we can actually afford, where on our own, the cost would be very prohibitive. I did attach the executive summary. Gives you a lot more information. Some of our renewals are also affected by what happens in Springfield. You'll see that the legislative passed the requirement that now we have to have $2 million worth of auto liability versus $1 million. So when little changes like that are made, then of course, those are incorporated, incorporated into our renewals. So we do have the attached property casualty student accident premium. It's $93,000. That's a 7% increase over last year. Also, through CLIC, we have a small policy for fiduciary liability. If you recall, we do hold funds and transfer funds from employees into a 457 and a 403B program. So it does cover the board for what they consider fiduciary liability. This is the second year of that policy, but I'm listing the information for you there as well. That's a $2,000 policy. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the CLIC liability insurance contract?
So moved.
A second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, approval of the copier contract. Mr. Simak.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I will again turn to Mrs. Hermes.
I would like to say thank you to good neighbors. We had a few copiers come up off a lease this year for District 67, and those are outlined there before you. But more importantly, we had a, a group of districts in the North Shore area that were also going out for copiers. Now, five or six copiers is not a whole lot of purchasing power. The high school had one copier up as well. So what we did at the time, you know, people were asking questions, is anybody else going over copier bids? And we're like, hey, I've got a few, you've got a few. Deerfield 109 agreed to lead up a consortium of five school districts, and our contribution was, is we provided the specs, because they liked our specs, and they led it, and had some large numbers of copiers in that. So we did slide our five in there. Outline before you, seven vendors responded to that RFP. And what we've outlined for you is the top three. I did provide some information, I believe, in here on the total click and the lease fees, but I want to talk a little bit about copying in general. We have noticed our numbers, our finances have gone down, our cost has gone down over the last few years. I know some posed the question of, well, what has our copying actually done? And I asked Cornelius to pull some of the numbers from some of our prior, some of our prior RFPs, and our, our number of copies really hasn't decreased a whole lot. And when we talk about that, it's a couple of things. One, we don't use a lot of printers. We use our copy machines as our printers, because it's cheaper to use them than it is to use actual, actual printers. So that's one thing that you will see, that we've made a very concerted effort to, and if there was still a principal in the audience, they would say, they would love to have a printer in every single classroom, because they would. We also have a high concentration of color. And the reason for that is, is we, we do get a lot of requests from the school, please don't take our color away. There's nothing more disappointing to a kid that puts together a project, and then prints it out and looks at it in black and white. And our costs have decreased significantly. Our high was in 1011, which was the last year of a five-year contract. We were at about $239,000 a year. This year, this year, I think we're, we're currently sitting at about $125,000. There might be a few bills left to pay, but really a significant decrease. So unless there's strong pressure of cost cutting, we probably won't take away the color printing at the elementaries, and that's where the majority of it, of it is. So what we're looking for is a renewal tonight with the, which is an agreement with Interact to update all of our five main printers. The annualized total from Interact is $26,922. That is, of course, based on annual estimated click counts, based on our current history. Currently, we pay for those same clicks $30,064. So this is a reduction, and we're getting newer, better, faster machines.
Other comments or questions from board members?
I've got one. If I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Epke, we've made the default setting on all, all the copiers black and white at this point, or we were working towards that. And this is one of these things where I had no idea that people would, could possibly be this responsive to anything, because I mentioned this sort of in passing, that we were inadvertently printing things in color from time to time, and the next thing I knew, they were hard at, you know, all about getting all the default settings to black and white. But it does cost a five and a half cents for a color copy, and a half a penny for a black and white. And so, and when, so we have an eliminated color, but we've made it so that you have to intentionally say, I want this one in color, so that we're not printing draft after draft at a nickel and a half. But, you know, there are economies going on here. And it is cheaper, as I understand it, to print, to network all of our printers, and have them print from the computer directly to the printer, or the, the copier itself, rather than having individual workstation printers with ink jets and so on.
Seeing no other comments, could I have a motion to approve the copier contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda, approval of EdTech Solutions contract. Mr. Simak?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And speaking of responsive, Mr. DeBeau is, has, one of the things that, over the course of seeing this, this contract renewal, and then looking into things, a good deal for the, the high school board meeting, was really surprised and impressed with the breadth of work that Mr. DeBeau does, the quality of that work, the difficulty of trying to keep all these various people that he's required to keep happy, happy. And then, in this, in this year, demonstrating particular value in the RFP process that people weren't just not aware of, that he had that skill set. And so, Mrs. Hermes can add on to this. I know that you've done a good deal of work on this as well, doing background.
Yes, thank you. Before the board tonight is a renewal of EdTech Solutions, which is Cornelius's contract. If you recall, we did make a very strategic change last year when we brought aboard Judy Epke. Cornelius has been in the consulting basis to the district for several years, and with some of the other changes in administrative personnel, we determined last year, and a retirement of a support staff tech person, that what, the niche that we thought that we would like to go after was really, really look for someone who was on the instructional technology side. And we were very fortunate enough to find Ms. Epke for that position. However, she would be the first to tell you, she's not a nuts and bolts. She is not the infrastructure. She is not the hard-scale hardware server type of person. And that's a very unique combination to find. And thankfully, for many years, Cornelius provided both of that to us, and we probably took advantage of him in, in doing so. So Cornelius's contract this year and last year was reduced, to really provide that support to Ms. Epke, and also, though, to keep the, the basics running on, on the infrastructure, the hardware, the, the wireless points, those type of things. Also does a lot of our Power School, and what I would call the systems that we use central office-wise. So you have Power School. You also have our financial software, our archiving systems, those type of, of things. So the contract before you is a renewal in the rate of $39,907, which is no increase from last year, in utilizing EdTech in the same capacity that we did this year in partnering with Judy Epke.
Thank you. Are there questions from board members?
Just a statement. I'm confident, too, that in this year of transition, where we're transitioning both the District 67 and 115 to the new website, I'm confident that you're going to be very necessarily helpful.
A question, maybe from Mike or Jen. Contract employee versus employee of the district. Rationale?
Yeah, I'd be happy to chime in there. We, the, the high school portion of this, I don't know if you've done the math, the, the total contract amount for District 67, I'm fighting with my computer here. Mr. DeBeau might want to send me some pixie dust so I can fix this. It's $40,000 is all-in cost for District 67. If this were a salaried, if, if this were a non-contracted employee, do you know what we would be paying for that?
I haven't done the math on the 67 side, but considerably more. Because when we look at the contract employee, one is we provide no benefits, no, you know, no unemployment, no health insurance, no disability, none of the things that you would normally see in an administrative package. Also, with Cornelius's contract, I just totally lost my train of thought when I was headed on that. We have the ability to still leverage some of the shared services with the high school, but also, we can custom tailor that to what we determine we need him for in the upcoming year. And so the $39,000 and change, which is C4, is working in partnership with Judy. There has been years that we wanted more of his time, because we had other things we were rolling out. We had more initiatives. were rolling out, we had more initiatives. We might not have that every single year, and so, we don't have a, an employee, or have this as an employee position. Now, along with that, he does have the ability to work for other, other entities as well, and he may or may not choose to do that, I'm not so sure, other than the high school.
I can add something to it. We did some, for the high school board meeting, did some background on what the going rate would be for somebody that provides the service that Mr. DeBeau does, if he were an employee rather than a contractor, and it was more than one-and-a-half times. And that was a pretty easily identifiable peer group within this region. One of our, one of the things that became clear from that is the struggle that we're going to have, so there's a financial pinch there, but also with the skill set that he's got, and that we do not have. I hope we don't get sick anytime soon, because we don't have a backup plan, and that's one of the things that has come to light, is that Mr. DeBeau is a Swiss Army knife for us.
I'm wondering, Mike, or Jen, or whoever can answer this. The high school pays two-and-a-half times as much, a little bit less than that. And so, is that how the time is split? And how do we monitor that?
The high school does pay more. They do not have a Judy Epke. So, at the high school side, Cornelius is not only supporting their hardware, software, but he's also doing instructional things, meaning with the department heads and implementing all their, their new programs and their pilots. So, he has a much bigger work there. How I look at it, how we're monitoring the time, and this kind of goes back to some of the shared service thing, is there are no shared service employees that, you know, keep track of their time like, like an attorney or anything else. I look at it, has there ever been a time that we've needed Cornelius and we haven't been able to reach him, or he hasn't even been able to provide service? And I would be hard-pressed to say that, I can't believe that he doesn't work full-time here for this district, because he's always been very responsive in there when you, when we needed him. So, there are really no shared service employees that are doing, you know, today I worked for one-fifteen, or tomorrow, or even some of the contractors. I mean, we have attorneys that work for both districts, and the same type of thing, is are we getting our, our money's worth from the contract? And I think that we are.
To Rob's point, do you sort of backtrack from the previous year or the year before that and say, this is sort of how, obviously not documenting moment by moment, this is sort of how I separated my time?
We have not gone to that detail level, and I don't think any of the positions are contracted services. But, I mean, I know I can just speak even from an alumni's position, there are some days that it's, you know, sixty-seven's been all sixty-seven, 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 you know, especially the weeks leading up to a board meeting. Now, there are times that it's one-fifteen, one-fifteen, one-fifteen. And I think where we, where we see that there might be a wobble or out of balance, I think we'd make those adjustments. Not all shared service employees, or even some of the shared contracts, are fifty-fifty. There are some that are eighty-twenty. And that is looking at, what is the job that we need them to do, or what is the, the position that we need them to fill, and how much time do we think that's going to take? And if we're wrong, we've made adjustments, usually in the subsequent years.
Personally, I'm looking forward to the new website. I think it's going to be a big step forward for the district, and really think a real positive, so. Are there comments, without not seeing any other comments or questions, could I have a motion to approve the EdTech Solutions contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda, approval of the school maintenance project grant. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you again, Mr. Anderson. And Mrs. Hermes, I'd like to ask you to get into a little bit of detail about, this seems like an odd thing, often looked at as a no-brainer, and why is that? Or Mr. Albus, as the case might be.
I'll do this one. I'm sitting here, this is the first time in twenty years, I think I've had one item on a June board agenda. So, I don't know what I did to deserve that, but I'm going to keep trying to replicate it. The Illinois State Board of Education is accepting school maintenance grant applications for up to fifty thousand dollars per district. Some years, this line item is funded by the legislature, and some years, it is not. If funded, I would estimate it would be about a forty-three-million-dollar line item across the state. While ISB is accepting applications, we're not a hundred percent sure that it will be funded. But, we do know that if we don't apply, we cannot participate. So, as you look through the material in your packet, the project that Carol White has selected is the Sound Abatement Project at Cherokee. So, by applying for this, and if approved, we can reduce the net expense, or the local expense, to the district by fifty thousand dollars. So, as, as Mr. Simmons said, it really is kind of a no-brainer to, to file the paperwork and get in the queue, and then hope that they come through with some funding on it.
Questions, comments?
I think it's great. Why not apply? Wonderful. I'm sorry?
Assuming the state has the money.
That is true.
May I have a motion to approve the school maintenance project grant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen staff compensation. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I recommend the approval of the thirteen-fourteen staff compensation as discussed in closed session.
May I have a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen staff compensation?
So moved.
I have a second. Not everybody at once. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is approval of the IASB Board Policy two-point-one-five-oh update. And board members, this is a first reading, or we're going to waive the first reading?
This would be a, the board needs to waive the first reading, and actually, this is something that the, at the bottom of the policy, it details the committees, and we need to make an amendment. Last, last month, we adjusted the number of committee members, and so, this time, we need to adjust at the bottom of the policy. We overlooked the fact that the committees weren't delineated, as is our current practice. And so, the board needs to first waive the first reading, and then approve the, the change on the second reading. You can do that tonight at your pleasure.
Correct. So, we're not required to waive the first reading, but I think, given that we've already passed another policy that sort of envisions this policy as well, it would be reasonable to, to waive the first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, could I have a motion to waive the first reading of IASB Board Policy two-point-one-five-oh?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item being approval of the IASB Board Policy two-point-one-five-oh update, second reading. May I have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is approval of Human Resources Report. Motion. Mr. Simmons?
I recommend the approval of Human Resources Report as presented.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval of consent agenda items. Is there any item which a board member would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have FOIA requests this month from Yoslem Yardimsey, from Yvonne Mayer, and from Laura Announcements, the next District sixty-seven Board of Education meeting is scheduled for July twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, at seven PM, right here in this room. That concludes, excuse me, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, there is one important announcement. I know the hour is late, but we cannot let Dr. Cooley leave us on her final board meeting without some words from her colleagues and from the board. So, this is ten years for Dr. Cooley, and the one-fifteen board had the same kind of sentimental send-off, and I won't, I won't repeat all the things that I said at that time, because she has heard over and over again from me, the things that I value so much. But, I will repeat what was said after one of our meetings today, and Dr. Cooley left the room, and she had contributed quite significantly to a really important conversation about staff and staffing and the direction of the district. And the comment was, boy, are we going to miss that. And because of the good thinking and the flexible thinking and the openness, those are the things that she brings to the table and spades every day, every time, and so, I'll let others add to that.
Julie, I would say thank you for the past two-plus years. I have learned a lot from you, and I value that. You are the person who never makes you feel silly for asking a question, and you always have the perfect way of giving the information delicately and succinctly. We are going to miss your leadership and your calm head.
And I'll just say thank you for everything you've done for the district, but also the community and everything. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I can't help it. I'll just say one more thing. So, this is a story that this board hasn't seen or heard that much, but we have a program that is housed in this building, and this is one of the things that, in having conversations with people at the beginning of my tenure here, it's like, you know, what are the things that you're most proud of? And each time you go and see the, the adults, the kids downstairs, you should think of Julie Cooley, because that is the proudest achievement that she has in her career in the district, and she can't talk about it without getting either really excited or really emotional. And both of those things are good things, but this is the sort of, the kind of work and the heart that she brings to us and to the children of our community. And these, this is an underserved population, without any question, and it's a great place. And every time we see the kids up here, it's a daily, it's a daily thing for us, and a constant joy, and we have you to thank for that vision.
So moved.
Second?
Second.